All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education meeting on February 25th, 2025. It is 7:02 PM and I am calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. All right, roll call, all our present except for Dr. Brent Forsey. And next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand. Just right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Inspiration, I'm actually responsible for inspiration tonight, but I thought it would be appropriate, actually, if I handed it over to Principal Champion for this one.
So, good evening, same board members, Dr. Van Alstel and the executive team. So, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to share some words on behalf of Jenny Perez. Jenny was with Arcadia Unified School District for almost 30 years. As our school office supervisor, she was more than just our first point of contact. She was the heart of our school community. Her warm greetings and infectious laughter brightened our days. Though her absence will be deeply felt, her legacy of kindness, professionalism, and genuine care for others will forever be woven into the fabric of our school community. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal Champion. And although it's going to happen later tonight, I wanted you all to know that we will be adjourning tonight's board meeting in honor of Jenny tonight. Very special person. She'll be very missed. We are to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bargo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. A report of action taken in closed session, no action was taken in closed session. And we are to the student rep report, Ms. Fan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Chen and I'm the ASB Academics Commissioner.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christian Cassis and I'm the ASB historian. And this is February 25th, 2025 Board Report. The Spring Pep Assembly will be held on Friday, March 14th, and will feature performances, games, spring sports, the prom reveal, and a special surprise. The ASB election informational meeting for the 2025 to 2026 school year will take place on Thursday, February 27th after school in the lecture hall, marking the beginning of the month-long election process. The ASB Carnation Gram fundraiser raised around $2,000 in profit. Clubs on campus will have a chance to showcase their unique purpose during the Club Takeovers event. Art and Interest and Service Clubs presented on February 24th, while Stem and Civics Clubs presented on February 25th. Taiwanese Appreciation Club, Vietnamese Culture Club, and EDI will jointly host a Lunar New Year's Celebration Event this Thursday, February 20th. There will be a lantern painting and traditional tassels. Black Student Union will be hosting a trivia-style event next Friday, February 28th, in celebration of Black History Month.
On February 13th, Link Crew held its Recruitment Informational Meeting for the 2025-2026 Leaders. Additionally, Link Crew is going through the process of electing new leadership. On February 7th, History Bowl's B Team won the Tournament Championship in the Southern California History Bowl, held at Mount San Jacinto College. History Bowl's A Team ended as semifinalists in the same tournament. On February 8th, Quiz Bowl placed third in the La Jolla Viking Invitational. Constitution Team has earned a wild card to compete at the We the People Nationals Competition in Washington, DC. On February 16th, Color Guard and Percussion performed an exhibition in Chino Hills. Coming up on the 22nd and 23rd of this month, Color Guard will compete at the WGI in San Diego. The 2025 Spring Sports Season has officially begun. Baseball has played their first game on February 17th against La Serna High School, winning with a score of 4 to 1. Softball also won their first game on February 17th against South El Monte High School with a score of 3 to 0. Senior Council is scheduled to have a joint restaurant fundraiser with Panda Express and Crumble Cookie, which will take place on February 27th. They are also in the process of planning a spring-themed bonding event, Spring It On, which will take place on March 28th. Junior Council is in the process of planning their all-school script Spring Bonding Event called T-Time on March 14th, the day of the Spring Pep Assembly. In addition, they are collaborating with Prom Committee to host a Spirit Week from March 10th to March 14th in preparation for the Prom theme reveal. Finally, they are hosting a Krispy Kreme class fundraiser. Pre-order week is from March 17th to 21st with a distribution held on March 28th. Sophomore Council is holding a fundraiser at Marugama Udon this Thursday, February 27th. Prom Committee has started making their prom gift and is in the process of recording the prom teasers. Freshman Council is finalizing their bonding event, Spring Awakening, happening on Friday, March 7th. They will be providing a variety of ice cream sandwich flavors, as well as materials to create paper flower bouquets and fun lawn games. They're also hosting a Yogurtland fundraiser on Thursday, February 27th, and that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Ms. Fan. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate the updates. Okay, so we are to audience comments, and we have one member of the public who wishes to make a comment tonight, and that is Ms. Sarah Hong. Please come forward to the podium, and you have five minutes.
So, good evening. I'm Sarah Hong. I have a biology degree and then I have a master degree in family. I come from the Department of Mental Health, and we are mental health promoter, United Mental Health promoter, and our Department of Mental Health is providing 13 workshops for free for the parents, so 18 and above. We can come to your school at the time of PTA of second language, English learning meetings, and also other places. If you want us to come to your school, we only need five participants, and we can provide trainings about teaching them about what is depression, what is anxiety, what is how to help the students with ADHD, autism, and also the people who is having suicidal prevention, that we are helping them to. Our program is trying to reduce stigma, and we have a lot of resources from the government that is for free. For example, there's Help Line that is for free for everyone, and also we have Solunar, we are providing Solunar and Bright Light Kiss for the student. If they provide a postal code, then they can have one-on-one counseling session, virtual for free, too. And we are providing resources for the parents to give these apps to the student to have some workshops that they can do to reduce their anxiety. Yeah, so I'm providing these materials to you guys. I actually have already gone to some of our high school, Arcadia High, and also some other school, but they said that I have to go through the district in order to be able to have these workshop in the school, which is, again, for free. So, I really want that those resources can be helpful, and I can speak Cantonese and Mandarin. We are going to deliver this workshop in Mandarin, in Cantonese, in English, Spanish, Korean, and other languages if you need them.
Can you just give this Mr. Eslen on the end? Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
All right, let me pause that. Okay, we are to action items, resolution number 242525, Women's History Month, March 2025, and Mrs. Yee, would you mind reading the resolution?
Sure.
All right. Women's History Month, March 2025. Whereas Women's History Month was first established in March 1987, which was followed by a series of congressional resolutions requesting and authorizing the President of the United States to proclaim March each year as Women's History Month. And whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation; and whereas women were essential in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation; and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders at the forefront of every significant progressive social change movement; and whereas women have served our country courageously in the military; and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all; and whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing board of the Arcadia Unified School District that March is designated as Women's History Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Could I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 242525, Women's History Month, March of 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ring. Any comments from student rep?
Sure. Just that the women on this board are serve as some of my biggest inspirations, and so do the female teachers I have in the classroom and also administration, and so I'm very grateful to have a district be so, to be able to recognize the merits of women and continue that, and I'm very grateful for the leaders in my life, like everyone here today.
Thank you, Ms. Fan.
And ditto to you.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Items removed and consent agenda. We have no items removed to consent agenda, so we are to information items. Report on Highland Oaks Elementary School Board Learning Walk.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I am pleased to introduce our latest Board Learning Walk, which was at Highland Oaks on last Thursday, February 20th. It's a blur, a lot of things going on. At Highland Oaks, where kindness, leadership, and student voice soar. The theme, very appropriately, was belonging, and we just had a wonderful morning. I really appreciated that we got to start by jumping right in and seeing the soft start. I won't talk a lot about it, because I'll let our board members go first, and then coming back and kind of having a presentation about your journey with MTSS and where you guys are and the collaboration, and so just a wonderful morning, but let's get into some of the details. Shirley, you want to start us off?
Sure. So, I wrote a lot of this day because I didn't want to forget. There was so much that day, but some of the highlights, so, but it was, it was such a beautiful day, that day, and I just really enjoyed seeing how your Highland Oaks community has really embraced that inclusive learning on campus, and you could really see it everywhere we went. Principal Champion, I love that you, you know, you and your staff decided the theme to be belonging this year, and you know to be belonging this year, and you know, I love how you wanted to weave it into your MTSS framework. I thought that was really a great way to sort of just like have this whole holistic approach to it. Let's see. And I want to also commend Mr. Holman and Ms. Williams. I really enjoyed your presentations. They were so thoughtful, and just learning about your PDs and how that came about, and the fact that your community really wanted to just have that community come together and learn together. And the topics that you guys had chosen were so appropriate and really kind of weaved everything into your theme of belonging. You know, supporting all students, you know, and saying like, not all minds are alike, because that's just a true statement. And I actually really loved your presentation about neurodiversity and how it's not just one thing, it encompasses a lot of different areas, and really being intentional about that, utilizing those inclusive strategies and providing empathy and support. I love that the second PD focused on the preventative behavior, which was, I think, just a great way to have students have agency and be able to think through things instead of coming out of a situation with not a, no understanding of themselves. And I really, I wrote this quote down because I really liked it, but like, and I don't know who said it, but behavior is like a diet, and we all have different diets. That's so true, and I really think that really encompass, you know, it really says to the fact that there's a lot of different learning, and what you're trying to do is capture all of that, and that's difficult because there's only one teacher in the classroom. So I appreciated that a lot. And then, of course, the ELD, I mean, I could go on and on. You're doing so much, I don't even know how you guys do it in one day or in a school year, but somehow you're managing to do that. And despite all that, the kids look so happy, working together, the soft starts, like Dr. DeMazel said, was really fun to see, and you could just tell that the students really just appreciated that time. And when I was asking the students, like, what was their, what was the best part of their, their week or their day? I mean, I think the majority of them did say it was the soft start, so that was really fun to see, so I liked starting out with that. Let's see, what else? Oh, I really loved the special me, special you activities with the third graders. I thought that was such a smart way of introducing and just that awareness of how everybody's not alike and everybody's abilities are different, and to experience that, I think, just is, it just brings more empathy, I think, amongst all your students. So I thought that was great and a great activity for them. And overall, like I said before, you could just see how the students thriving and everyone feeling like they belonged in that community, no matter, you know, where they came from, their abilities. It was just a really wonderful day, so thank you so much. I mean, I could go on and on, but I'll let
Save something for me.
Mr. finish off.
It was a great day, a great way to start. You started with something called the soft starts. Seems to be a trend throughout the district, where students come in first thing in the morning, and they're given an opportunity to choose an activity that fosters soft skills. They get to be, learn how to be collaborative, they learn how to be creative, and most importantly, have fun. A lot of the games were, a lot of the activities are game-based or tactile, which I really appreciate, you know, especially today with the popularity of Minecraft. It's great to see that Lincoln Logs still exist and that we're still, it's still an engaging way to build in this non-digital world. I appreciated the presentation from Principal Champion and Ms. Williams and Mr. Holman. We learned a lot. We learned about how, with MTSS, we're continuing to develop in our own way, where that somehow we landed at Highland Oaks on the sense of belonging as a key component of being successful. And belonging starts with care. It's very evident on your campus. You see it throughout everyone's behavior. We learned about behavior strategies. And I love how we still have thinking maps. Thinking maps are very important in terms of organizing our thoughts, and I always reflect back that even my children learned thinking maps over twenty years ago in our elementary schools, and I'm glad that we have something that continues to work well. We learned about the wide range of neurodiversity. Eighteen different forms were identified, everything from ADHD to being on the spectrum to being gifted. Learned a lot from that. The special you, special me was fun. It was a series of different stations where you got to experience what it's like to be disabled in different areas. For example, you had to go through a course with your eyes closed, with just a stick to help navigate through a course to give you a sense of what it's like to be blind. You were trying, you were asked to read a paragraph where the letters are jumbled and hard to understand, so it gave you a sense of what it's like to, when people with reading disabilities. I think it's great. It's a great way to gain an understanding of what difficulties are, and it gave you an appreciation for, for the differences, and it gives you a sense of empathy for those who are lacking in certain areas. Lot to take in. There was so much. I saw a lot of team problem solving, which is always a great thing to see. It's not a, it's not an isolated, learning is not an isolated thing. Problem solving is not an isolated thing. Great day. You have a great culture there at Highland Oaks. It's a great place to be. Thank you, Principal Champion. Thank you to the staff. Another great visit.
Thank you. It is amazing how fast the morning went, though. Couldn't stay all day. I will start with just sharing that I left on Thursday with just the utmost pride in you all for what you have created together, truly, you know, together as a team. You can feel it, you can see it, you can sense it. The kids can verbalize it, that you truly are a family, and you're on the same page, you're cohesive. You share that in the PD, but walking away, I just thought, this is where I'd want my child, and I think that's the greatest compliment any parent could say. Ms. Williams and Mr. Holman, I, you know, your presentation was awesome because it wasn't just about the content. You know, you could, you could feel the passion, you could, you could understand the depth of knowledge that you all have, the level of empathy and care, I think, for each other. It just, it truly came out, so it was as much the feeling as we were there as it was the words being said, so I just really appreciated that. The, I just also want to mention the soft start. I know this is, you know, it's been kind of evolving, but it's great to see there's so many more activities, and, you know, just every kid was engaged and happy and laughing and smiling, and you have to remember, it's the beginning of the morning, right? So it's like, this is just such a great way to get, you know, minds engaged, and I was trying to think of where we're going to put one in the district office for the first kid here in the morning. You know, I spoke to a young man named Julian, you know, he was just like, I get to feel like a kid again, you know, playing the little games, and I was like, you're not still. But, you know, I think, you know, kids grow up quick nowadays, and they move so quickly past that stage of linking logs and just being able to have the space to work on a puzzle and that type of stuff. So I'm really proud that you all are taking the time and see the importance of doing that to start off your day. The belonging, I know it's been mentioned, but it just, it's such a brilliant idea and just so appropriate to who we are, who you are, that when you talk about instruction, behavior, and social, emotional, that, you know, what brings all that together is that sense of belonging, and without that sense of belonging, you're not going to get to those, those other areas that we, that are so critical that we want to. There was also a lot of mention of support throughout the presentation and within the classrooms from staff, and I just, I appreciated that because it also shows that level of collaboration, not just internal with the, with your school, with Highland Oaks, but like, you know, drawing on the resources of the district from coaches and specialists and, you know, we have behavior specialists, coaches, counselors, lead teachers, you know, just so many people mentioned in different areas of development, and I just really applaud that. The neurodiversity, I know, you really touched on that a lot, but love this form, just because it was so easy to like, I mean, well, first of all, you forget how many things there are, because I always say when we go in classrooms, especially elementary, like, when you see something that, that's going on and it looks smooth and there's order to it, it's like, we all know there's a million variables behind the scenes in the prep and the design and all of that to what you're seeing, right? It didn't just happen magically. And so I appreciate it, not just the form, but someone mentioned, it might have been Billy, that when he was sharing, you know, his experience with this, that it's so validating because you go in and you reckon quickly, you're like, oh, my gosh, I see this, 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 and this, and, you know, you don't recognize it sometimes of how many things are going on that, that we are doing, educators are doing in the classroom, and doing them at a high level of performance. And so anyway, that was, but I loved the form. I've never seen it all in one place, so that was great. I also wrote down the thinking maps. It's always neat to see the new, you know, you guys being innovative, and there's new things going on, and then there's the, just the good old thinking maps that have been, you know, true and true to us for many, many, many years, and, but continue to work and continue to be, being used. So just so many great things. It was truly a great morning. Like I said, just left proud of what you all have achieved and who you guys are as individually and as a staff. You're doing amazing things for kids, so thank you very much.
Time's up really quickly.
Principal Champion, share a few words.
Good evening again. Thank you so much for that kind and thoughtful feedback. We were so happy you were able to visit Highland Oaks last week. We take great pride in our, at our school and fostering a community that's inclusive and implementing neurofirming strategies for all of our students, that they can, they can thrive in a really safe and nurturing environment. We were glad you were able to experience that as well. I'd like to thank Janay Williams and Billy Holman for their collaboration on the, on the presentation and also co-presenting with me. When the three of us reflected after the morning, all three of us commented on how much we enjoyed our time with you. So it was just a really lovely morning, and we just really enjoyed it, so thank you all for coming, and the district executive team as well. I'd also like to recognize our specialists who are here tonight for their outstanding work on the special me, special you, celebrating different ability stations. It's definitely an important message for all of our students to gain that empathy and support of one another. We're taking it broader now that we've kind of did our soft launch that, last Thursday, and we'll take it to the rest of the school coming up soon. And of course, to every Highland Oaks teacher and staff member, some who are here tonight, your dedication to meeting each student's unique needs and creating an environment where all children can thrive demonstrates educational excellence, that is why this, so I appreciate you, and I'm thankful for you. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Principal Champion. Thank you to the entire staff. I will try to make it over to Highland Oaks, one of my most favorite and special places in the world to me soon.
Can I just add, I totally forgot, but I did want to mention, I did want to say also that I really enjoyed the student panel. I know we all forgot to mention them, but they were really, I mean, it was really fun to hear what their favorite things were at the school and just hear all the different, I mean, it was, they weren't all saying the same thing, which was amazing. I mean, it was clubs, it was all these, all these different things that you were doing for them, so anyway, thank you to the students.
And I know you guys have had a long day, so please.
You don't have to stay.
I know. Thank you for coming, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we are to information item B, which is Board Policy fifty-thirty, Student Wellness Revision First Reading. Mr. Eslen. Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Everybody else, please.
Now, now is your chance.
That was your chance.
All right.
No, they wasn't.
Looks like they're staying, everybody. We got an audience. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Normally, I do not introduce Jim Anderson's board policies, but I just wanted to take a moment to share with you all something that has been going on, maybe a little bit under the radar for the last year and a half, and that is our, I'd say revived Safe and Healthy Schools Committee. We had, we've had versions of this in the past. Ironically, COVID kind of killed the Safe and Healthy Schools Committee, or maybe not ironically, but at the start of last year, we started this group up again. And I just want to start by acknowledging the members of the group. Obviously, we have Mr. Anderson here, and we've got our risk manager, Jaime Morales, Connie Chu in Business Services, who is also a parent of the district. Other members include our own Ryan Faran, who helps us with parent community involvement and promoting, health promotion for staff. Kathleen Ashworth and Christina Chang from Nutrition Services, Erica Newkirk from Health Services, and also Tony Barrios for our facilities. And, oh, and I'm sorry, I should also say that Erica Newkirk is also a parent in the, in the district. And so really, we've, this group has come together, and it's sort of based on a model that's been provided by the California Department of Education. There's different sort of categories of emphasis, health education, physical education, the parent and community involvement, nutrition services, health services, counseling services, and then the, the school environment. And that's why we've all come together. We meet about twice, or I'm sorry, every two months. And one of the first things we talked about was like, why are we together? Why are we a group? Why is this a committee? And I think it starts with, you know, what are the outcomes that we have in mind, both for our students and for our staff? And part of that is academic performance, you know, healthy nutrition, healthy lifestyle, that all leads to students doing better in school, obviously, mental health and social relationships. It's good for everybody, and then also disaster preparedness and crisis response, unfortunately, is part of that as well. And then I also talked about, or we talked as a committee about the purpose of the committee. And I think the first thing I had to acknowledge was that we're checking over a lot of boxes. You know, we have a lot of requirements as a public school district, and this committee meets a lot of those requirements, like updating our board policy tonight, including these topics in our LCAP, and all of the, the plans that you see come across for board approval, workplace violence prevention, those kinds of things. So yeah, there, there is that purpose to it. We need to do these things, and this is a way to get it done. But I also think, and I've started to see this over the last year and a half, that like, we're able to coordinate our efforts across the district. These are a lot of smaller departments that have strong interests, but maybe don't always get the, the support and the resources they need to push their agenda forward. And I don't mean agenda in a bad way, but, you know, things that are good for our kids and staff. And so by having a committee where they can bring up these topics and get support, get feedback, and get other district managers to support them in their efforts and their plans, I think it just, it's really opened a space for people to have these conversations about their work with people who may not focus on their topic specifically but are like-minded around the topics of health and safety. So that is the committee that we've got. I will say, and we've done a lot of interesting things and had a lot of interesting conversations. The, the campus inspections fall within this group. We were talking recently about active shooter training. Jaime is connected with Arcadia Police to get that provided to staff free. I mentioned the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. Jim Anderson has the Critical Incident Plan that we've talked about recently. And we also, just the other day at our meeting, looked at the websites that Ryan and Lauren maintained, the Safety Preparedness and also the Mental Health and Wellness Support website. And I think our, our public comment and the, the county resources that they provide for mental health, I think that that will probably be something that we have a conversation about in our committee, about maybe having a partnership there. I think it's a great opportunity. And so moving now on to Board Policy fifty-thirty, Student Wellness, I will just conclude by conclude by saying, I am very happy to bring, bringing this to you tonight with Jim Anderson, because we have literally been working on this since the first meeting a year and a half ago. So this is a real, I feel like it's a real accomplishment for this committee. Go ahead, Jim.
So, thank you, Derek. In, in this committee, it, it, it's, it's a great committee. And, and Derek is, is truly the leader of that committee and brings us together and ensures that we're all staying focused. And, and it really drives a lot of different pieces. And so its policy is pretty broad. So basically, it replaces our existing wellness poly, policy, and it aligns the requirements from different state mandates, as Derek said. And the policy covers topics, student health, school safety, school environment, nutrition, physical activity, physical education, family staff, community involvement, psychological services. There's a lot of, of this in here. If you remember too, our LCAP Action Two Goal Two, I think it is, the components of coordinated Safe and Healthy Schools, that's this committee. And so that's exciting. The, we spent a lot of time, because there's so many different things that are included in the policy, we chose to tease that out. Before, it was a little bit of a mishmash. And so we talked a lot about that. And so what we did is, now we direct readers to the actual policies on physical education, rather than have things about physical education in this policy. And so that way, when we update one, we have to remember to update the other. So we referenced a lot of the policies to sort of separate it and align with our sort of structure as, as we are moving forward with cleaning up our policies. And let's see, the other piece is, the writing that I wanted to mention, the writing really did take a lot of work, but we feel the result was worth the collaborative efforts to align all of our policies. And we reviewed those other policies as well to see if they needed updates. And those are things that are on the agenda. I did want to mention, thank you, board members. You guys actually read the policies, which is great, and provide feedback ahead of time. We did make the correction of that formatting error. Basically, there was something that should have been a number, but it wasn't a number. So we fixed that. I wanted to mention that. Do you want me to just keep going on with the other policies?
Sure.
Okay, I'll just keep rolling. So the next two policies are related to our graduation policy and our alternative credits towards graduation. So our, our grad policy, and then we're required also to have an alternative pathway to graduation. So again, this policy, we've been working on it for several years, because as we were working on it, the legislation would change. So we'd say, okay, wait, 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 and then the legislation would add something else. Wait, 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 wait. So finally, we decided that legislation has some look-aheads, 29, I think, 2930 and 3031. So we put that into our policy so that, that it's already there. So this was a collaborative effort between the high school, Ed Services, Special Education. And it basically specifies the courses that a student is required to complete. We used to have credits, so we changed the language to courses that meets the Ed, it matches the Ed code and, or, and as well as CSBA recommended language. It, it specifies the courses that they are required to complete. Education has been, code has been revised to, which facilitated the need to, to do this. And some of those things that were included, it, we had to remove all the language about the exit exam. We had to put exemptions and transfer of credits for foster youth and homeless, as well as migrant students and students from the juvenile court system. So all of that needed to be included. And then there were also changes for students with disabilities that included exemptions, as well as graduation requirement mandates and issuance of diplomas. And so we included all of that. And as I mentioned, I think the first is the ethnic studies, and then the second is the personal finances. Right? And so those are also included. The courses haven't been fully developed yet, but we put it in the policy and they are working on what the curriculum will be for those courses. I did, again, want to say thank you. The swim proficiency requirement, that was, that was in this major cut, and we didn't even see it. And I'll take responsibility for that. So thank you. We've put that back in, and we put it under proficiency requirements, because we didn't really know where it would go. So we put it there. So that's also included. Moving along to Policy 6146.11, Alternative Credits Towards Graduation. Ed Code basically requires the governing board to adopt alternative means for students to complete the prescribed courses of study required for high school graduation, that's specified in the previous policy I just talked about, point one. And it also, also authorizes students to satisfy course requirements through practical demonstration of skills and competencies. And it, it, we chose to follow the CDE's guidelines and the, the General Education Demonstration, or the GED, as well as the California High School Proficiency Exam, those cannot be used as alternative credits. They can be used to, to earn a diploma, but not through, not through Arcadia, right, but through these other places. And then basically, we align the policy with education code, and it's mostly education code. It's, it's really, there's hardly any language that isn't directly out of education code. So we ask that, with the changes that we mentioned that have already been made, we ask the board allow these policies to be brought to consent with the mentioned changes. Do you have any questions or other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to circle back to the very first one, the wellness. There was a piece in the policy about assessment, I think, and who was in charge of that. And that was a change from Ed Services to Business Services. And I just wondered if I'm in the right frame here. And I thought maybe if we could just elaborate publicly why we made that change, because there is so much curricular in that safety and health and with the PE and the sex ed and all that. But then there are also the other pieces. So could you just speak to that?
Sure. I think there's maybe two parts of it. First one is sort of, who is overseeing all of these processes? And, and that did transition from Assistant Super Ed Services to Assistant Super Business Services. I think that transition occurred just because I was having so many conversations with Jaime Morales, our risk manager, and with Kathleen Ashworth from Nutrition Services. Like, there's, a, a lot of these requirements come from the Nutrition Services side. And so I, I, I think just over time, having these conversations, learning about all these requirements, participating in all the JPA meetings, I, I mean, I've, I've taken an interest to these topics. I have enthusiasm for these topics. And so I was happy to take that over and, you know, lead this committee that we have. You mentioned assessments.
Yeah, there was like a three-year cycle of taking a look at what we're doing.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that go on every year, every three years, that we don't necessarily see what's going on. Nutrition Services every year sets goals. They're required to set the goals and then measure and follow up, and then modify the goals. That may occur also in other parts of the, the committee's work. They're doing surveys on an annual basis. So I, I think generally, we're trying to align the process within this committee with a three-year cycle that aligns with the LCAP. And so we've, we've got this now set up. We've got this, this is, I think, the big policy that over, that sort of guides a lot of the work that we're doing. So it'll, it'll, we'll try and keep it with the LCAP.
Yeah. I love the collaborative aspect of this, because it really does bring so many disparate departments together. I mean, we're all trying to create the same thing, but there are so many avenues of approach. And this really brings it together. So we're all talking to the right people.
And it's, you know, when you, when you bring a room full of smart people together and let them have interesting conversations, a lot of connections are made that nobody ever anticipated.
Just our values, think critically, be creative, all of that. It's really great.
I, and now that we're finally making progress with this policy, the meetings are, are becoming more fun for me. Because they, honestly, they got bogged down a little in this process. We've pushed through, you know, we were just learning about the stages of group, group development. Like, we, we've been through the storming phase, we're now normaling. So it's all good. Yeah.
Thanks.
So each of the sites, they have their own, like, safety preparedness plans. Would the committee be reviewing, like, all the site, all the plans, or recommending, like, a template for them to use?
So, so that's sort of my responsibility for the district. And so, because I'm on that committee, we do talk about those things. We talk about more of the requirements for those plans. So a lot of that work is done for the schools, those, those required things. I'm trying to think of, of one of the new ones. I think it was around, we had to have something in the plan around an R can, I think, right? And so we, we put the language in. It's, it's very specific, it's required that we have. And so we put that in. The, the schools really are then, they spend their time on looking at what their goals are in those same areas, right? Physical plant, emergency response, and then school climate, right? And so they align those. So I, I think that that's sort of a, I'm sort of the liaison with the schools to help them, you know, but they usually know what they're, they're doing and what they want to do anyway. And so they're putting those types of things in. We're making sure that it's compliant. And then the committee is, is sort of giving guidance from these other people that also know that these things have to be in certain places. And so we're trying to align it too, so we're not making people do 50 plans.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
As you know, that goes.
Any other questions?
Okay.
How often do y'all meet?
Every two months.
Okay.
I, I guess I'll admit that I bribe them with food, language, to get them to attend.
As one does.
Can I come to you on this?
Yes.
We're always happy to have a representative of the Board of Education.
All right. Is everyone okay if it comes back on consent?
Yes. Thanks for making the changes with our input.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Director Anderson. Alrighty. So that brings us to department updates.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. These are the updates from the executive team, 360 degree kind of a view of what's been going on across the district and each department since our last board meeting. So we'll start with Business Services.
Hello again. I'm going to talk just for a moment about lease lease backs, because you're all thinking, what the heck is that? It is one of our consent items to sort of begin this process of some of the construction projects that we're going to be doing at the high school. And we are going to be using this financing method called lease lease back. The reason it's called lease lease back is because legally, when we have a contractor who's going to do the work, we lease them the property, they improve the property, and then they lease it back to us. And that makes no sense. And I, you know, we just have to go with it. But the reason, and we've used this in the past, we did it, you know, over 10 years ago with Measure I, just a couple of projects here and there. But the reason that we select this approach, other than the sort of standard lowest bidder method of, of, of contracting, is it allows us to make sort of a broader decision. Instead of only selecting based on cost, we get to select the contractor based on best value, which, and I'm, I'm reading the language here that's in the law, we get to take into consideration the contractor's demonstrated competence and professional qualifications. So along with cost, we get to think about their experience, any experience we've had with them, and those, those kinds of other factors. Also included in this process is something called the guaranteed maximum price, which sounds really good. So that's negotiated upfront. That cannot be exceeded. And so that requires the contractor to complete the work within that maximum amount. It typically results in fewer change orders. And it, the, the lease lease back process also allows you to bring on the contractor sort of earlier in the process, so that there can potentially theoretically be more collaboration, like between the designing, the architects, and the construction companies, so that it's more of a collaborative process. Because that handoff from the design to the build part of the project can sometimes be a little rocky. And this helps smooth that process. And so it is a competitive process, and the, the contractors do have to pre-qualify, and that's where we're starting tonight. Any questions?
I have a question. With the lease lease back, like, if something happens on the property at that point in time, is it like under their insurance or our insurance?
I, I'll say I don't know. So, and, but I'll speculate and say that probably the normal insurance processes apply. You know, if it's something that the contractor is doing that is dangerous, or they're not complying with what we're requiring of them, you know, they'll have responsibility for that. But no, it's, it's not like we give up all rights to this piece of land that they're taking over temporarily. No, we still retain the ownership, the responsibility, and our, our insurance still applies.
All right. We'll move on to Human Resource Services. Dr. Harish.
All right. So starting with Health Services from Nurse Manager Erica Newkirk. Last month, the Health Services Team completed state mandated hearing, hearing screenings. Together with our screening partners, Arcadio, Arcadia Audiometric Associates, we were able to screen 3,883 students and identified 89 students with potential hearing deficiencies. Per state guidelines, students who fail the initial screening are screened again by our school nurses in two to six weeks. And parents of students who fail both screenings will receive detailed referral letters to recommend medical follow-up. February is National Children's Dental Month, and we are once again working with the Colgate Bright Smiles, Bright Futures Organization, to offer a fun, informative dental health education session to elementary school students on February 27. Teachers and students are able to join the session on Zoom. The mobile dental clinic will also be visiting each of our elementary schools during the month of March to offer an onsite dental screening to TK through one students, which is a state mandated screening for these grade levels. Moving on to Special Education from Dr. Katherine Mahoney. We have begun our annual process to prepare for students who transition between levels and programs. Elementary, Special Education teachers have met with middle school teachers to discuss each student moving from elementary to middle school next year. This communication and collaboration ensures that students have a smooth transition during these big changes. Our preschool students will be meeting with TK and K teachers, and our middle school teachers will do the same with high school teachers over the next several weeks. Thank you to all these teachers for the huge amount of effort and time that they put into gathering data, work samples, and more for these articulation discussions. And in, from the HR perspective, we are, we have lots of work ahead of us. So the past two weeks, I've been meeting with site administrators to review our enrollment and staffing projections and develop plans to recruit for vacancies. A few have been posted already, and will, there's many more to come in, in the weeks ahead. So exciting time for us. And that concludes my report.
Principal Recruitment Start?
Yes.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the time that those teachers are taking for that vertical alignment, the care of those students moving from one level to another. It's so important. Oh, anyway, it's a lot of work, but it just really pays off.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to Technology Strategy and Innovation. Greg Guzini.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about something that may not be super exciting, but it is updates on technology. So I think we're, we've all gotten used to, we have our smartphones, we hit update, then they get updated. The challenge in the Technology Department is most of our technology does not update that easily or quickly. In fact, we often have to schedule it. And for whatever reason, several of our updates have landed within about two weeks of each other. Major updates are going to be due. So to start off with, this previous Friday, we updated our firewall system. Our firewall system protects all of our network in all of our schools in Arcadia. We get hit with thousands and thousands of attacks each day, and our firewall actually stops them. Uh, we get hit with thousands and thousands of attacks each day and our firewall actually stops them, uh, at the point, uh, where the data comes in. Because we are such a large, uh, attack, uh, we have a large tax service in terms of service security, uh, people are often hitting us with those attacks. And updating it makes sure the firewall knows about, uh, those types of attacks that are coming in. So updating it allows us to prepare for that. Uh, the update went very smoothly. So huge thanks to, uh, Brian and his network team, uh, who stayed late to do that this past Friday. Uh, we just found out a day or so ago that Power School has issued a software update with the latest requirements for California state reporting. Mr. Russell mentioned earlier today that we have a lot of requirements that we have to fulfill with the data we send in. And every time that happens, we need to update our Power Schools, uh, system. So I believe that's actually happening in about an hour. Is that right? All right. So that's happened an hour. We found out about that, well, probably about a day ago, maybe less. Yeah. So, uh, we're gonna be doing that one as well. And the final one we're gonna be working on is updating the hardware that runs some of our phone system. Believe it or not, our phone system is about eighteen years old now in the district. Uh, and as you can imagine, the technology's changed a lot. And updating some of that hardware will allow us, if a line goes down or our phones have to enter an emergency state, we'll still be able to use them, which obviously is very important. Uh, we were reminded of this during some of the recent power outages and data outages. Uh, so replacing that hardware will allow us to do that. And we're going to be, um, updating that in the next week or so. So huge thanks to the department. Uh, it is always challenging to do these updates because from the outside, uh, looking in, uh, you just want things to work. And, uh, our team tests it first, uh, they prepare it, and then they're ready for contingencies if something goes wrong. So we'll be running those updates, uh, again, to increase the, uh, cybersecurity posture of the district, the, uh, phone, uh, emergency state resilience, and to make sure we can meet our state reporting obligations. So, thank you.
All right. Our Chief Communications Officer, Ryan Ferran.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Past couple of weeks, we put out a couple stories and articles about the impact of the fires on our staff in particular. And just wanna remind everyone in there that the fundraiser is still open until Friday. So it's kind of fascinating how fast the news cycles are. The news trucks are gone, but, and the community did, has done an amazing job so far raising over a hundred thousand dollars. But if you know California real estate, um, the need is still big. And, you know, in one of those stories, we mentioned the campfire that happened in twenty eighteen. And five years after that, only twenty-one percent of the homes were rebuilt after five years in Town of Paradise. So if you put that in perspective, we're a month out. Um, so the need is real. So if you have it in you, consider it. Uh, that fundraiser through AEF is still open until Friday. And I know it'd be much appreciated, the very least, if you can share that link on your social media, um, to others who are looking to donate. That would be fantastic, cause there is a huge need. Um, Karina Herrera, who's one of our psychologists who lost her house in the fire, will be, um, AXA has a legislative lunch, live web kind of, uh, show every week, and she's gonna be on that tomorrow. She's being very kind to do it, cause it's not her thing really, but she knows it may raise some more money with the fundraiser being open. So she's gonna do it for us and everyone else. So that's fantastic, um, of her to do that. So again, that is on the AEF webpage and it's still open until Friday. That's all I have.
And that ends our reports. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Van Oostal. All right, we are now at consent items. So I need a motion for consent items A through M, please.
I move, uh, to approve consent items A through M.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee.
Before, uh, yeah, before I vote, uh, Mr. President, I abstain on purchase order number twenty-five zero 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 one seven eight five. I am a volunteer for that particular organization.
Thank you, Mr. Aang. So ma- motion made by Mrs. Chavez, taken by Mrs. Yee, with Mr. Aang abstaining on the aforementioned, uh, purchase order.
Can't repeat that from memory?
Not quite. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, passes five zero. We are two comments of the boards, superintendent and staff. Uh, let's start, uh, with Mrs. Fan.
Uh, I don't have much to say, but the one thing I wanted to shout out was thank you to, um, Dr. Anderson in the Wellness Center at Arcadia High School, cause, um, there's a lot of things going on this month. I think it's like heart month. Uh, so a lot of mental health awareness, as was mentioned earlier in this board meeting with the audience comment, and also like wellness as a whole in terms of the board policy and the committee. And I just wanted to thank her. There's also like teen dating violence month. And so, um, the Wellness Center has been going around Arcadia High School and providing a lot of critical information and also hosting a lot of events to help boost wellness. So, uh, I think the students really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fan. Mrs. Yee?
Uh, all right. I've attended a lot of meetings lately, so I'll just try to go quickly because I have some information. Uh, the first one was the Performing Arts Foundation meeting, and they wanted me to pass out the little flowers I gave to you. But their next concert is on Saturday, April fifth at eight PM at, with the Letterman. Um, on the flyer, there is a discount code, so, um, definitely use that. Um, I don't know much about the Letterman. Maybe Mr. Fenton Aang knows more about them since he's on the committee, but.
They're sort of an old school group.
Right. I think so.
Which has, uh, it actually has a following.
Yes. So I've bought my tickets and hopefully I'll see everybody there. Uh, the second unit I attended was the AEF meeting last week with Dr. Van Oostal. Um, and the subject of the fire relief fundraiser, um, it's doing really well. I think now it's about a hundred fifty thousand, which is wonderful. We could, we were able to receive a, a large donation, which I'm sure they will talk about later. So we're really, um, just continuing the effort, um, till this Friday. So, um, like Mr. Ferran said, please look at the AEF website if you have, um, any interest in donating. They also are doing some new things to support Arcadia Unified. Um, they're gonna start creating banners, um, for company logos. And so, um, if you have a company and you're interested, uh, keep a lookout for that. I think that's a great idea. And they'll have one at each school. So it's a good opportunity for our companies and a, and a great support for our schools. Um, summer school registration is coming upon us. So mark your calendars, seniors and juniors. Um, it will open on March twenty-fourth. Sophomores are March twenty-fifth, freshmen March twenty-sixth, and then middle and elementary on March twenty-seventh. So keep your eye out. They're doing a lot of, um, more fun programming. So, um, I think it's gonna be a great summer for all our students and others in the community. And the last thing that I wanted to mention, cause I think this is a great idea, AEF is gonna start educational seminars for our students. And so the first one is gonna be at the end of March. They don't have a date yet. Um, and hopefully it'll be on social media and how to be a YouTuber. I think that will be of interest for a lot of students. It might be a fun thing for, um, students to sign up for when they have the date. Uh, the last meeting was the music club at the high school. And, uh, they have really exciting news. This is so amazing. But they've been invited to be the California representative, the marching band in Color Guard for Washington DC's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday celebration on July fourth of next year. So they're super excited. Um, it'll be a different, uh, you know, event for them just because it's in the summer. So they're gonna be reaching out to the eighth graders since they won't be at the high school yet. But they're gonna see who wants to participate. And then they're gonna also invite the recently graduating seniors to go as well. So it will be a really, um, great opportunity for our students. And so congratulations to them and to, um, Kevin Sherrill and his staff. Uh, their next big event for music is the Orchestra Benefit Dinner. It'll be, um, on Saturday, March eighth from five to eight PM. And the theme is Feast of Fiddles, which sounds like a really fun, um, you know, uh, theme. They said, wear green. And they're excited to bring, uh, a Celtic band to play as their special guest. So, uh, head on over and purchase tickets. I'm not sure. You may have to reach out to orchestra parents for that, cause I don't know if it's on the website or not. Or reach out to me and I can connect you. Uh, the other last two things that I thought of were interests is that the Arcadia High School Choir and the district choir that has the middle school kids and the elementary school kids after school, they'll be having their concert on March twenty-seventh at San Anita Church, only because the PAC is gonna be occupied for the SBCA, I think it is, SBCO.
Yeah, Southern California.
Southern California.
Orchestra Association.
Yeah.
It's a lot of letters.
They're, they're, the school's hosting it, so, uh, so they'll be at the San Anita Church. Um, and then lastly, Color Guard is gonna be getting ready for Nationals in Ohio in April. So a lot of things going on for our students. So, and that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Mrs. Vargo.
I've been sick for the last two weeks, so I haven't been doing that much stuff. But I looked up the Letterman while you were talking. Their hits are The Way You Look Tonight, Can't Take My Eyes Off Of You, and Put Your Head On My Shoulder. So. Uh, I had actually looked them up before, cause I wasn't sure and I couldn't remember. So I'll look them up again. So that should be a very good show.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'll be fun.
Um, uh, during my week, two weeks off, I guess, the only thing I really did was go to a first district PTA meeting. I'm always pushing that, I guess, for you guys. Um, and we had a special speaker. It was, uh, Dr. Sh- I think his name is Schoenfeld. He's the director for the Center for, uh, National Center for Bereavement and Grief. Um, and, uh, he gave a presentation on, um, just the, the services that they offer. They're free. And they, uh, they'll come out and they'll train your staff, your parents. Um, uh, you just have to contact them. I, I mean, I, I don't know what their, what their, uh, what their selection criteria is, but that, that's something that they do offer. And then they also have, um, uh, like short videos also on their website, um, that, uh, that people can, can look at too, to, to inform themselves on, of, uh, frameworks for, for attacking that in their lives. Um, and that's kind of all that I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. Mrs. Chavez.
Thank you. You know, cause I just wanna be Jen. I took over being sick. But, uh, I wanted to, uh, just give a quick update on athletic boosters, uh, winter sports wrapped. A lot of success moving into early stages of CIS. And congratulations, all those teams. As was mentioned by the student report, the spring sports are off and running. And the annual Athletic Booster Dinner, uh, which is an adults-only affair, is scheduled for March twenty-ninth. So I will definitely be there. Hope you guys will, all join me in supporting that. Uh, they are very excited about the upcoming facilities projects that will be affecting athletics. Excuse me. Anyway, so, uh, on a secret, separate note, I wanna just correct, congratulate the academic teams too for their really strong support. And, uh, it'll be exciting. I mean, we're doing national for the band, Nationals Color Guard, percussion, I'm sure, will be hitting Nationals right after that. And our gov team will be going to Nationals in DC. So Miss Fan will be there while I'll be greeting for you. Really appreciate the focus on wellness. It is a central tenet that safe and wellness and belonging leads to academic success. And so thank you. I think the committee, uh, collaboration is just really gonna be very strong. And I'm glad, I'm glad to see that up and running again. So thank you. And thank you for taking the leadership on that. Um, and then lastly, just want to give my very heartfelt condolences to Jenny's family and to the entire Highland Oaks community. Uh, it is so hard to lose someone that is such a vital and vibrant part of your day-to-day experience. And so just heart goes out to all of you. And that is all I have for tonight.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. Ms. Ring.
I don't have too much more, but, uh, I did attend the LCAP Advisory Committee meeting led, uh, by Mr. Anderson. And, um, really good to see that, uh, we involve everyone in our community, staff, administrators, parents, students. Uh, really great opportunity for everyone to understand what, what the LCAP is and also contribute to the whole process. So I'm glad that we don't, uh, we don't treat this as just a requirement, another box to check. And, and we, we take it serious because it is, um, something that guides the district. So. Other than that, um, thank you once again to Highland Oaks for a great visit. And, um, appreciate you staying for the meeting too.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Um, I'm gonna be short as well. Uh, thank you, Director Anderson, for, uh, bringing those board policies to us and making all those updates all the time and taking our feedback and making those very important updates as well. So appreciate that. Um, and secondly, just want to shout out all of our staff for, um, their leadership and their, uh, creating the safe and stable and secure places for our students. Especially in recent times with the wildfire and other things happening throughout our country, uh, that brings a lot of uncertainty. And that sense of belonging is so much needed. Um, so just thank you to everybody, uh, for keeping our sites and classrooms safe for our students. And that's all I have. Dr. Van Oostal.
Couple, uh, the, wanted to congratulate the First Avenue Middle School PTA for their, uh, the night market. Uh, that was the first one I was able to attend. I always had conflicts some last year when I heard, and I kept hearing so many wonderful things about it. If you've never gone, try to make it next year. And I would encourage you at some point to go just peek around and look in the kitchen. Not you, Derek, cause there'd be probably lots of safety issues. But, uh, they use the, the home act, or, you know, foods, uh, room. And all the parents are in there. And it's like a Top Chef show, like they're just running around and, uh, but the smells are incredible. And, and most of the food that's being served is, it's not from vendors. It's from, you know, parents that are, are coming in. And it's a great, uh, it was a brilliant, uh, concept for, uh, for, you know, fundraiser. And all the families are there having fun. And it was well-attended. So it was an incredible, uh, night. And then, uh, I was able to attend the Rotary Teacher of the Year for Baldwin Stalker, uh, last Friday. And so Principal Brown was there with, uh, Francis Ambley. And Francis was recognized as their educator, I should say educator, um, of the year for Baldwin Stalker. And then, you know, I'll just close with this. I wanna thank, uh, Principal Champion for representing, uh, Highland Oaks and representing the district, um, at the Celebration of Life Funeral for Jenny. You just did an amazing job of, of, you know, attempting to encapsulate and, and sharing some of those moments that, that, uh, helped people, uh, laugh, cry, um, remember, um, and, uh, but the, the presence of your community there, I, I know meant so much, um, to the family. And just appreciate everything that you guys do to continue to support each other, uh, during this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van Oostal. So tonight, uh, in honor of a very special person, someone who has been an integral part of not only Highland Oaks, but the entire district, who's, uh, has touched the hearts of many and will be extremely missed. We adjourn this honor, adjourn this meaning and honor and remembrance of Jenny Perez. Thank you.